Good afternoon and welcome to the twenty seventh meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. I see there are no minister proves we will move directly into the calendar calling public hearings, calling agenda item number one. Application number two, two dash two, four, five, one, five from Surf Bar LLC.
Well, Chair Vice Chair members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zibakalom here on behalf of Surf Bar LLC. To my right is a member. I'll let him introduce himself and spell his name.
Owner Nikolai Blankin. M A K L O A J Blankin T L E N K I M.
We reviewed the single letter of protest that was provided to us. The only comments that I have are this is a space that was previously Spencer apparent as well. We're located inside a hotel. So there's very minimal noise that gets put to the the outside environment.
Thank you. Mr. I give anything.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This application was rescheduled from the January twenty sixth meeting. Public hearing kept open. This application has received one written protest, your letters and support. African has been statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the December first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Vice Chair Hong prior to the rescheduled public hearing.
Right? And comments, questions or?
If you could ask if there's anyone in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony for this matter? Agenda item number one. Seeing none.
So Mr. Z Bakalam looking at the floor plan. The restrooms are outside of the licensed space. Do you think is there a way for anybody to go anywhere or is it just? Does it end there or does it lead to an open public space?
So the restrooms are located directly adjacent to the bar itself, but from my understanding, no alcohol is allowed to be taken, obviously outside the license premise. And I'm not sure. Is there a corridor from the bathroom that leads to an exit or is it just directly in front of your bushes directly in front of the wall bar?
So the only thing I'm going to suggest is, I mean, I know I'm not not sure if I made that comment in the prior. Hearing on preliminary hearing, but we need to make sure all that people aren't going out of the door with stuff. So you might want to make sure somebody stationed near the exit because it looks like that's one of the bigger exits, right? It's a double swinging door versus a single swinging door on the backside, right? Which I'm assuming is just like for your exit for kitchen people or things like that, but. We can make sure of that.
Will do.
Further questions?
I move. We approve agenda item one, application number two, two dash two, four, five, one, five.
Second. There's been a motion in a second. Any reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, two dash two, four, five, one, five is approved. Calling agenda item number two, application number two, two dash two, four, five, two, six from top LLC.
Hello, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is James Lee, representing up LLC, E B A Royal Lobster. Sitting to my right is the handsome man. I'll let him introduce himself.
Justin Sock, that's okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any changes to investigative report?
No, sir. Nothing.
That's right.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This matter was rescheduled from the January twenty sixth meeting. Public hearing kept open. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters of support. African has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of December first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Vice Chair Hong prior to the rescheduled public hearing.
Right. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comments on this agenda item number two? Seeing none. Any comments, questions from the mission?
Are you the same top that was downtown?
Yes.
And had a liquor license there as well?
Yes. So any question I have is just reconfirming right outside seating or outside dining areas enclosed glass enclosed, correct?
I have pictures.
Yeah, I mean, being honest, I think I've eaten at your restaurant when you first opened.
Yeah. Pretty, pretty, pretty tight with the.
Yeah, but I mean, there's no actual door, right? That goes in or out of that glass section. Except we got to go through the dining area. Correct? Okay. I have no further questions.
Yeah, we approve agenda item two, application number two, two dash two, four, five, two, six.
Second, there's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, two dash two, four, five, two, six approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. I look forward to eating there again.
Moving into special license applications, calling agenda item number three, application number two, three dash zero, one, eight, two, dash one. Your application number two, three dash zero, one, two, eight, two, dash two, six inclusive from LA Garden LLC.
You very much, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Definitely. We're presenting another garden LLC and to my right is Mr. James Lloyd, a member of another garden LLC. We have no actual corrections to the report.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. This is such a it's a special. Any comments or questions?
So I have some questions. Okay, so Mr. Nicole, some questions for you and your client. So looking at her on your client's application. Not a whole lot of liquor experience. So I guess what I'm looking at is, I mean. It'd be pretty long period of time and you know seventy seven days and using a luau type thing. Is he going to be using somebody that has, you know, experience in distributing the, you know, liquor and alcohol?
Yes, we're hiring a bar.
Okay. Let's see.
There was a previous group that was performing the catering at time. And they were able to glean information from them that way to operation, things like that.
Okay. Let's see. So when you look at your guys' floor plan. So yellow larger is of red indicated for where you're at. Is that is that fully enclosed? Is it open? And then trying to look at the floor plan, like I seen a certain area where there were bars. Where is going to be the entrance? Obviously, I see an entrance thing, but yeah, well, that yellow slashed off area is that? How many seats are we going to have in there? Do we have an idea? I mean, just so we have an idea, right? We're we're trying to make sure. You know.
Tunnel.
Okay.
Everybody lobster. So we have somebody checking.
And they're going to ban there at the tunnel or at the bar? Okay.
And then they enter the the there's a greeting area and then the bar is in the red area by the audio towers. It can seat about four hundred fifty.
Okay.
Currently, the seating has been at about two hundred. Yeah, we've been operating at about two hundred.
Okay.
We started July fourth.
Okay. So I'm assuming the bottom where it's a seating in those two, four, six, eight rectangles that used to be the old stage or?
No, that's a that's a VIP area.
A VIP area.
Raised.
Okay. Okay. And then besides that, the regular delineated licensed spaces are going to be like open air or is it going to have something cordoned off where people cannot?
It's open air. There are there are servers traveling throughout. Keeping an eye out for things as well as the bar managers, the managers with property itself. So.
Okay. Um, just so we know, right? I mean, we're asking about the
Of course.
area because anything caught outside that licensed space, right? Technically becomes you're liable for it, right? Even if they didn't get it there and do anything with it, right? That's so that's why I want to just make sure, right, that
Of course.
there's not going to be things passed or moved out through those spaces. Um. And it's a large space. I mean, you know, you might want to think about in the future. You know, this becomes longer than this library, some type of not super tall barriers, but some kind of permanent type delineation.
Understand.
That's all the questions I had.
Move. We approve agenda item number three, applications number two, three dash oh, one, oh, one, two, eight, two, dash one through two, three dash oh, one, two, eight, two, dash two, six.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries applications number two, three dash zero, one, two, eight, two, dash one through two, three dash zero, one, two, eight, two, dash two, six is approved. Thank you very much. On agenda item number four, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, five, three, dash one through three, dash zero, one, three, five, three, dash three, zero from A F H Y E P LLC. Good afternoon, Chair Buckley, a member of the Commission, Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of A F H Y T T LLC. Appearing with me is Frank Clark, owner. We've no changes to the duty of report. Advocate has been operating on special licenses. And you need to extend that further. And you have a permanent license pending, correct?
Um, so this is for the sticks.
Right.
Restaurant area at the bottom, right?
Correct.
So only question I had is, so I know the whole space is licensed. Is it going to be where that each individual restaurant will still be able to serve? Or are you going to have like a bar there, specific area? I mean, as obviously right, I'm just trying to understand how you're going to make sure like somebody from one place is not passing to somebody outside. Because I mean, I've eaten there prior to becoming sticks. And obviously, there's several separate restaurants.
The concept is the same. Liquor will remain within the individual restaurants. It's just we have a master liquor license for the entire premises.
Okay. Then do you have? No, there's like what one, two, three? Four entrances or exits?
It's three into the staircase.
Yeah, and then that leads to the elevator up into the building, correct? For parking. So you have people stationed that each one of those kind of making sure people aren't taking you down.
We have employees who will be walking around to make sure liquor does not leave the premise or essentially does not leave the restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Obviously, they can maybe leave. Have something because I know there's a bar in the middle too. Correct? Yeah, yeah. Okay, I have no further questions.
I presume there's been no incidents while you've been operating. This looks like it's pulling you through roughly mid May. Do you know the status of your permanent where you are in that process? My understanding is it's still being worked on. It was filed early June of last year. So no preliminary hearing and opening.
All right, I move you through the agenda item number four, application number two, three dash oh, one, three, five, three, dash one through two, three dash oh, one, three, five, three, dash three, zero.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none. I also vote I motion carries applications number two, three, dash zero, one, three, five, three, dash one through two, three, dash zero, one, three, five, three, dash three, zero inclusive are approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Calling agenda item number five, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, six, seven from Coles and Catering by Cinnabon.
Commissioners, my name is Sam Maduro, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cinnabon.
Can you just walk us through this application?
This one is a baby shower. A pretty simple event. It's a courtyard event, hundred people. And the liquor or the bars in the end, and it's just all contained within the courtyard. And there is going to be one HPD officer outside.
That a hundred people, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have any question.
I move we approve agenda item number five, application number two, three, zero, one. Three, six, seven.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations seeing hearing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, three, six, seven is approved. Thank you. I'm calling agenda item number six, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, ninety five from Coles and Catering by Cinnabon.
Afternoon Commissioners, my name is Sam Malero, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cinnabon.
Can you walk us through this?
So this one is a first birthday. Instead, this one is going to be in the in the ballroom this time. We did include the courtyard and the ballroom. It's house rules when they rent the ballroom, they also get the courtyard as well. So we also license that section as well. Two hundred get that there's going to be two officers on site.
So based off the on courtyard stuff. How many? I guess my bigger question is for your staff, how many guys are you going to have staffed out there only because obviously right courtyard is pretty wide open, right?
Still, yeah, it's still wide open. It's accessible by the guests. Officers usually help us out, but we always have at least one staff either in the ballroom or in the courtyard.
Okay. The buffet line, I'm assuming is going to be right outside there too, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Man, we just, I guess my biggest thing is just make sure we have at least a couple of people out there watching. Because it leads out to everywhere and we don't want things traveling outside or guys coming into the door and giving to other people. I mean, first birthday, I don't think we'll get that, but just be careful with that, okay?
For sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have no question, no further questions.
And I move we approve agenda item number six, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, five.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations seeing hearing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, five is approved. Calling agenda item number seven, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, seven, zero from Free Spears LLC. Good afternoon, Chair Buckley and members of the Commission, Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of Free Spirit LLC appearing with me is Matthew Troy, Manager. We have no changes to investigative report. Can you just walk us through this?
Yep, it's the closing ceremony and tour for Aloha Stadium. It'll be on Saturday, February twenty fifth. It's from ten AM to nine PM. The event is broken up into kind of three little mini events. The first period ten to twelve is free of the public. There's not a lot of activations. It's there for people that want to just come in and get on the fields and pictures. The only attraction is the tour. From twelve to four, it's for the kids. So the main attraction is like a kids combine where they can run around with some of the X U H players. And then from five to nine is a live entertainment portion for the young adults.
Is alcohol served? The whole day, some of the day.
Alcohol be served from twelve to nine. But we might open that up at ten when the event starts, depending on how hot it is.
What are you doing in terms of security? Because obviously there's going to be minors participating throughout the day.
We have sixteen roaming security guards on the field plus another twelve ushers from Aloha Stadium that'll help monitor. We're going to ban all the guests that buy alcohol and we're only serving in twenty two size can. So they'll be identifiable.
Hey, so some questions. Entrance, is it only going to be from the north end zone?
The entrance is through the main security gate in the ticketing booth. And then they'll go on the tour. They'll go to the locker room and come out the tunnel where the players come out.
Okay.
The north end zone is for loading and unloading and emergency exit only. So no guests are going to come through that.
So they're going to be coming through the locker room.
Yeah.
Um, when will you be ID and banning them?
When they come to the bar. So we'll have a security guard at the tunnel entrance. So alcohol can't leave the the field. Alcohol is only on the field.
Okay. So alcohol will only be on the field of security at the exit point. Where that they're going to ban at the on bar. Um, so it looks like you have two bar sites, right, on your map?
Correct.
So but how many guys are you going to have banning into those areas if you have an idea?
We'll have two security guards at each bar.
Okay. Okay. Is your bartender is going to be able to ask for ID if they feel that the person doesn't look of age?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Where do you answer? Question, based off your report, it said restrooms are only going to be in the locker rooms. So you know, people guaranteeing that guys aren't going to be able to take drinks into the restroom, correct?
Uh, no, they can't drink in the restroom either. So we'll also have a security guard at the locker room door. So they get only stay on the field with.
Okay, I mean, I'm just making sure, we don't want guys obviously going into the restroom and pass it off to their younger brothers, whoever in there, okay? Um. Parking. So I know that they're going to be able to park at Aloha Stadium. Somebody happens to be drank too much, not able to drive or they're going to be able to leave their car at Aloha Stadium.
They will. We have a plan with Aloha Stadium that if there is a person that's too intoxicated to drive and they can't and they want to take Uber, they can leave their car overnight and get it the next day. Put the swap meet open on Sunday.
And the only last thing I have is what is your, you guys, I said, I think it said ticket sales were in advance so far. Does it have a number you're at right now?
Uh, right now, we're at two thousand. Out of that two thousand fifteen hundred of them is during that free period.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
I move we approve agenda item number seven, application number two, three dash one, three, seven, zero.
One, at the zero, we're after two, three, dash, zero, one.
Three dash, zero, one, three, seven, zero.
Seconds.
There's been a motion and a second. Any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, three, seven, zero is approved. Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, eight from Group Child Charities. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Commissioners. That's Suci on behalf of Group Child Charities, L A N C E T S U C H I Y.
You can read this a lot of year then.
So this is our fourth year with this event. Previous years, no altercations or incidents. Anything serious that we have to report. We worked, we work in conjunction with Bishop Museum to put on this event. It's to promote local music and agriculture.
What is your expected turnout number?
So we've had up to three thousand people in the past. We normally cap it around there. Now the space, the total utilized space is about seventy thousand square feet, but we a lot of it is for logistics and staging.
And tickets on pre-sale or is it?
Pre-sale currently at twenty dollars.
Do you currently have a number that you've already sold in channels?
Very few.
The only thing I was going to ask is I think if I remember the last floor plan, if you look at your floor plan, there's that part that says unused service path. It's now in red. I don't remember ever seeing that in red. Is there a change there or what's going to happen?
I designate that area just because that's the path of our barbacks.
Okay.
And stuff like that.
Okay.
General public is not allowed in that area. If you look at the way we gate off our bars, nobody is allowed behind our bars or anywhere on the sides.
Okay. I just, I most of the area with that was always in the circle area. So I just was asking. Do you see a darker line where it looks like you can't get past the bar? So that it. I have no further question.
Good memory.
Move. We approve agenda item number eight, application number two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, eight is approved. Thank you. Moving into preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number nine, transfer application number two, two dash two, four, four, seven, four from Kelly O'Neill's LLC.
Good afternoon. My right is the owner, John Langham. The record is like Wayne looks as close. So Langham is on his second license and so far.
Questions?
So the only thing I'm looking at is your floor plans. You have two pages, right? Exhibit A opposed, and then you have the exhibit A, the next one. Is that like a second floor where it's like your office accessory storage? The office. Is it like on a different level or is it? I'm just looking at trying to figure out where it is within the original the exhibit, exhibit A floor plan, the first one.
Yeah.
Is it anywhere in there? So the reason why I'm asking.
Yeah. No, it's not serious now. No.
Okay.
We have a black and white copy. Is that going to be a license premise or is that outside of the license?
It's on the license, but there's no liquor in there. I'm sorry, I have my.
That's okay.
But it's taken the premise as is. You know, as a chance.
I move we approve agenda item number nine, the application number two, two dash two, four, four, seven, four.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations hearing or seeing none. I also vote I motion carries application number two, two dash two, four, four, seven, four is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number ten, application number two, two dash two, four, six, zero, nine from Jay and the Investment Group LLC. E B A Blomix West.
To my right is Daniel Lynn, he'll be order. It's relative console wing look. There are no changes to the investigators report. He has been operating the premises, you know, with all liquor for about a year now.
So the only thing I want to point out right is we're looking through the application, right? The other Palama Express. One Aloha Tower space, right? Yes, there is quite a few violations here and there, you know, that you guys have went through. With this space, I know you haven't used or sold liquor in it. This is going to be your first stint of doing it. Let's try to work to make sure we don't have as many violations, okay? Because we don't want to see that. We want to make sure we're
Sure.
doing well with it, okay?
Sure.
Beyond that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And we approve agenda item number ten, application two, two dash two, four, six, oh, nine.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing or seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, two dash two, four, six, zero, nine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number two, two dash two, four, seven, three, five from Kamakura Hawaii LLC. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Let me call on behalf of Kamakura Hawaii. Present to my right is authorized agent Miss Miyoko Yamanochi. We have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you. Any comments from?
It's cool on the floor plan. Right hand side. Is that outside seat?
On the, I guess the way you're looking at it, there's up facing on the right side as well as. Um, on the, I guess the way you're looking at it, there's outside seating on the right side as well as on the um top part of the plan, so. Yeah, the liquor will not be served on that, the right side seating area, that's just a waiting area for the customer.
Okay, cause I'm just looking at the floor plan and it looks like there's the lineage of redness that shows it's part of the licensed area.
Oh yes, that part of the outdoor is part of the liquor license. This part is part of the liquor license, this outdoor.
Yeah, 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 so the outside seating part that is gonna be part of the liquor licensing, right? Um, what, so is, what kind of blockage do you have over there, so it doesn't, you know, get beyond your license space?
Have a um wall or partition.
A partition.
Across, so there's no access from outside.
Okay.
To the restaurant.
And then you only have one doorway out to go in and out in that space?
Yes.
Okay, do you know if you're gonna plan to have someone stationed out there at like most of the time?
Well, we have a server working around serving the seating area.
Okay, my, I mean, my base reason for asking a question of concern would be, if you have groups out there eating by themselves. Not too many people out there, that doesn't mean that they're not, might not pass something to maybe their older brother, older brother with his younger brother, vice versa.
Yes, there'll be a dedicated server for the outdoors.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Many seats are on the outdoor area.
On the outdoor seating, we're looking at roughly. Twenty-four? Sorry, it's eight seating, is it right there?
Oh, in the, in the.
The outdoor area, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We approve agenda item number eleven, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-three-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-three-five is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-four-six from N C Concepts LLC D B A.
Good.
Chair, members of the commission, great, you show authorization of being on behalf of the applicant, we have received investigative report, no changes, so.
Okay. My prisoners.
Okay, so, Mr. Shuka, looking at your floor plans, I don't see any color showing what is actually the license space? And what you're changing in the license space, do you have something?
What's, the one that we got shows a red outline, which, if you can see it. Then the agenda number eighteen, item number eighteen today addresses the uh the current situation with regard to permanently touched.
Okay, cause.
You see, you can see.
Okay.
I would say. Uh, yes.
Okay, so that was part of my other question, cause I didn't see any color on that one, so that's my only reason. I can't, I don't know what is the actual.
Commissioner, if you look at the application, um, the floor plan on the uh on the present matter, you'll see a small little box here that's has. Crossed, it's crossed out, that's gonna be the sole retail portion of the. Okay. We're just reducing the whole footprint from a retail, so that we can go forward with the restaurant.
Okay. Uh, the thing I would suggest is, as we move forward with, um, the restaurant thing, can you keep some of it, somehow make sure we have something showing what the license space is? Cause otherwise I would ask the same question again. But.
Not a problem, Commissioner.
Got it, other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you very much.
So reading those two applications together, you're gonna reduce the current retail space, but you're going to have that still be a retail space, and then you'll have the restaurant space.
That is clear.
And is there any delineation between spaces, because you'll have two licenses, so they'll have to be separate?
We'll, we'll kind of work on that, you know, that, actually that space that's gonna be the sole retail is a refrigerator. It's a refrigerator, that's right, that's why it's so small, they'll grab that and then, you know, sell from there. Um, you know, it will keep separating the calories, um, well, I mean, you know, we'll use pool by buying to take care of the purchase of alcohol. Take care of.
So point of order, we're gonna take item number eighteen right after this, or are we doing them together?
Yes, we, we should take.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I move, we approve agenda item number twelve, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-four-six.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objection to reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-four-six is approved. Uh, calling out of order, agenda item number eighteen, uh, request number two-two dash two-four-seven-four-five from M C Concepts LLC D B A.
Good afternoon, chairman of the commission, great issue for authorized agent, appearing on behalf of the requested party. The agents. Investigative report.
So can you just, for matters of agenda item number eighteen, just summarize what you were stating previously?
Yeah, as stated previously under agenda item twelve, currently it is a retail space, we're reducing it, allow the restaurant license application to go forward. The only portion that will be remaining is a retailer, but it needs to come two by three or three by three area, which is actually a refrigerator.
Yeah, I move, we approve agenda night, item number eighteen, question number two-two dash two-four-seven-four-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, request number two-two dash two-four-seven-four-five.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking that out of order.
Back to our regular order, agenda item number thirteen. Uh, calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two-two dash two-four-eight-four-nine from One Team Restaurant AMC LLC. Um, gentlemen.
I don't remember thirteen, yes.
Yeah.
Commissioners Keith Suzuka, on behalf of African One Team Restaurant AMC LLC, D B A Walburgers. Uh, to my right is the general manager, Robert Phillips, who reviewed the investigative report, and I have no comments, but stand ready to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
So, we get the floor plan, right, there is only one entrance, right? The one in the main, next to.
For customers, yes.
But there's that back entrance, right, that's more for the kitchen and your staff, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Is there, I can't really make it up, there's no such, no bar seating or anything like that, correct?
Other is bars.
There is, okay. Okay, okay. Well, I have no other further questions.
I move, we approve agenda item number thirteen, application number two-two dash two-four-eight-four-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, application number two-three dash two-four-eight-four-nine is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number fourteen, application due to dash two-four-nine-two-one from Earth Food USA LLC. Good afternoon, Turbukia members of the commission, Neil Bota, appearing on behalf of Earth Food USA Inc. Appearing with me is Taku Arrai, last name A R A I, a manager, we have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, uh, commissioners. Yeah, I have no question.
I have no questions, I thought your food looked delicious on that picture, so. I move, we approve. Item number fourteen, application number two-two dash two-four-nine-two-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, application number two-two dash two-four-nine-two-one is approved. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Temporary license applications, calling agenda item number fifteen, application number two-two dash two-four-two-seven-three from My Restaurant Group Inc.
Tomorrow, it is the owner Min Young Choi, he is president of council, Wayne Luke, we have no changes to the investigator's report. He has been managing the premises for the last uh six to eight months, has done handle problems.
Mister Choi, I, I believe there were outstanding violations that needed to be cleared up for Sergio Bang, is that part of your encumbrance?
It was cleared up.
Oh, it was, okay, good.
That's, what we have has been cleared up. Thank you, then, we did have a, we did have a hearing a couple months ago.
Okay.
I have any question?
All right. Okay, I move, we approve, uh, agenda item number fifteen, application number two-two dash two-four-two-seven-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objection to reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, application number two-two dash two-four-two-seven-three is approved. Thank you. Calling application number sixteen, application, I mean, agenda item number sixteen, application number two-two dash two-four-seven-five-five from Yun Qian Young, D B A Friendly Store.
Applicant Ian Qian Young, this president, the council Wayne Luke, there are no changes to the investigator's report, I'm just a clarification. In June of two twenty twenty, I received a phone call in June that the owner had passed away. And that there was, you know, probate, the person representative had not been appointed yet. You will see in the report, one was appointed later on in July. I approach a subject to administrator, assistant administrator, uh, Mrs. Yurai. And the recommendation is I write a letter to get permission from the commission to renew the license and file a ghostile report. And that's where we are. They granted that, the license was granted that year, and this past year, the license was renewed.
Can I put something on the record really quickly?
Yes, sir.
With respect to, um. Twenty-one ninety-five, there's a provision in that first paragraph with respect to, um. Uh, a personal representative, so on and so forth, continue to exercise the license for the purpose of uh closing the affairs of the state. But if not so, continued within forty-five days, the commission shall cancel the license. This does not operate as an automatic cancellation.
Sure.
This would have to uh be agended and put before the commission for action, because there is, we had uh some discussion about the effect of that statutory provision. It has not been brought before the commission, it would not operate on its own to automatically cancel at forty-five days. There was a concern about that.
Um, Mr. I, if I understand you correctly, does that mean the commission has discretion to approve or deny?
Yes, I believe so, thank you.
Before the cancellation, if there was a cancellation.
Thank you. Our commissioners.
I'm gonna probably be like to this, but when I ask for a motion to go into an executive session. Um, to consult with the parties, there is on questions issued, and I refer to power, due to their liabilities, sir, very, very disciplined officers. Um, the situation matters, I think privacy may be involved. I'll interest in the motion to go into an executive session for this purpose.
I move that we go into executive session. For the services.
Second.
There's that emotion and second, any objections, reservations, hearing seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, here now, executive session.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
We are back. Thank you for allowing us time to be in executive session. For agenda item number sixteen, application number two, two dash two four seven five five. We were deliberating regarding a conclusion of law that were. That we're bound to make in this matter related to section two eighty one dash ninety five. Unfortunately, in executive session, we weren't able to. Arrive to any conclusions and satisfactory matter. So we're going to continue. This matter for thirty days and seek further counsel from corporate counsel. So if I could have a motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and the second are the objections or reservations. Hearing none, I also vote either motion. Harry's this matter is continued for three days.
Okay, thank you.
Moving into catering licenses, calling it the night and number seventeen, application number two, three dash zero, one, four, one, nine for Pacific Suites LLC.
Afternoon Chairman members of the Commission, this is your Robert Wheel on behalf of Redfish Book of Art by Fuland, President my rightness Chelsea Cogge Hero District Manager, first name K E L. S E Y. Last name K A G E H I R O. At this time, we have no changes to the investigated report. This is to extend an existing catering liquor license. For the cafe area at the way we find their hotel.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have no question. Move, we approve it and item number seventeen, application number two, three dash zero, one, four, one, nine, second.
There's been a motion and a second ending objections, reservations hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries application number two, three dash zero, one, four, one, nine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving into requests, calling agenda item number nineteen, request number two, three dash zero, one, three, zero from A U Y Restaurants Liability Company. E B A M W Restaurant.
Good afternoon Chair Buck, we are members of the Commission, Neil Bota appearing on behalf of K Y Restaurants LLC doing businesses and W Restaurant. Appearing with me, Garrett Brown, the manager, we've no changes to the report. Applicant has or licensee has used this area for the past one year with no problem. It's a request to continue the extension for another approximate one year.
So. So go to you see. You said that you guys have had this. Temporary extension of space. What a year now prior.
Correct.
So looking for another year.
Correct.
So I guess two questions.
Sure.
One is going to be, you guys have some kind of plan, the future to make this. Work as either a portion like a permanent space or not. I mean, you know, as we keep going year to year, right? We. Look at, you know.
Yes.
What is the space? And then the other question, which you can give me your answer after, is this the second floor portion of where? Um. The auto dealership is because I know M and W has moved to our, yeah, sorry. M and W move to the second floor, right over there. So is that the extension portion of the second floor? Are we talking about the first floor area?
We're talking about. Same floors and W is currently on.
Okay.
It's a separate room that's maybe ten feet away from the entrance.
Right.
And of.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it can't be permanently expanded to because it's used for a car showroom. And so what was happening was we were coming in for one day extensions. For events practically every week. And so it was getting a little tedious. And so the compromise potentially was. Get a one year extension or temporary extension. We only use it when we have events, so it's not twenty four hours. I mean, we're not using it all the time.
Okay.
So unfortunately, it can't be a permanent expansion to our premise.
So. Um, my only point I'll raise is I can't remember if I sat on the first time you guys did the first year's one. I just want to make it known, right? That this is your licensed space. For three hundred and sixty five days, if something happens to somebody, no matter who it is. Or what it is without alcohol, your client will be in here for a violation, just so they understand that.
You've explained that to them and we work with velocity to ensure that that space is monitored because it is. Technically, we're responsible for that twenty while we have this extension in place.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Velocity knows that they're not permitted to serve alcohol and they're on the list. Correct.
And we will approve agenda item number nineteen, request number two, three dash one, three, two, zero.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second and the objections or reservations by hearing and seeing none, I also vote either carries request number two, three dash zero, one, three, two, zeros are good. Calling agenda item number twenty, request number two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, nine from Junior Hawaii Inc. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Chairman members of the Commission, Naomi Cole on behalf of Junior Ronan. I'd like to request that the extension be on. The date of the extension be going from March tenth to April tenth. We have thirty one unused days for the temporary liquor license. They're currently operating on a temporary different license. And you'd like to be able to continue to serve alcohol through the public.
Where are you in that process?
I was told that just the other day that the preliminary hearing was set for next week Thursday. We should be able to hopefully get the liquor license by by the end of before this April.
Haven't had any problems during the current temporaries yet. Problems.
No, no, they are very diligent getting that on calendar.
None. I mean, no problems serving.
Oh, no, no.
Okay. I have no questions.
Move, we approve agenda item number. That was. Twenty, request number two, three dash oh, one, three, nine, nine, second.
There's been a motion and second ending objections or reservations hearing or seeing none. I also vote either motion carries request number. Two, three dash zero, one, three, nine, nine, thank you. Calling his jump item number twenty one, request number two, three dash zero, one, four, zero, zero from Jack all of one at LLC.
Yes, Naomi Cole on behalf of Jack, Jack Alamon LLC, I have the same request for this applicant. When I turned in the application, I didn't know exactly when the preliminary hearing would be. So they have a hundred twenty unused days, but we probably only need sixty days. So I'd like to request on that the temporary liquor license extended from March thirty first to May thirtieth, twenty twenty three. I was notified just today that the preliminary hearing is set for next week Thursday.
That should be sufficient.
Yes.
So. Only question I have is, so is the applicant actually open or are they not open still yet?
They're still not open yet, but they're, it's just about imminent, anything.
Okay, so they're at that point where they can't open it anytime. Okay. I'm just looking at. There are the two moves right and then now this is not a beside disaster. Okay. I have no other question.
Okay, I'm will we approve agenda item number twenty one, request number two, three dash zero, one, four, zero, zero.
Second. He's been a motion and a seconds, any objection to reservations hearing, seeing none, I also put I the motion carries request number two, three dash that's zero, one, four, zero, zero is approved. My question, can I get a type of action for gen items number twenty two? Through thirty seven.
Then we'll be approved of the items number twenty two through thirty seven. Findings of facts, conclusions of law and decisions of order.
Second.
There's been a motion and a seconds and the objections or reservations hearing and soon on down. Also, where either motions areas. Agenda item number twenty two. With that, we'll move into application hearings.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon Commissioners, Tom Snaps, Deputy Corporation Counsel on behalf of the City County upon a rule.
Afternoon. Calling agenda item number thirty eight, L C V two, one dash zero, four, three, seven, Fresco Restaurants.
Good afternoon, intergum, the members of the Commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Fresco Restaurant. Appearing with me is he saw Tarumi. Last name so T A R U M I. He's the general manager. We enter free of no contest and wave reading of the charge.
Motion would accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and seconds, any objections or reservations hearing none, I also vote either motion carries the pleas accepted.
So now your recommendations.
This violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is the first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Circle tiny explanations.
Applicant believes they submitted it on time. However, we have no proof of that. And so we are entering the no contest. The applicants will not cut it so close in filing this in the future and understands the deadlines. And so this should not happen in the future.
So he received everything, but. He thinks he turned it on time.
Yeah, they recall, I mean, they say they walked in and filed it on October thirty first, however, they don't have. Who put that so.
Mister, is there anything in the file when it was on? Or when it was received?
According to the investigative report, it was received on November fifth, twenty twenty one, four days after the deadline held up.
Okay. Well, then I made a motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a seconds and the objection to reservation hearing on seeing none, I also were I the motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item thirty. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number thirty nine, L C B two, one dash zero, four, two, four, Jen Korean barbecue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair Commissioner Stephen Eco, representing Jen Korean. LLC. I will let. Just kind of introduce himself as a young lady.
Yes.
The manager. Carla, she's our A G M at Jen Bridge.
Could you spell your name?
C O N A M. Last name is P A I K. I am R O S A. And Carlos. Wave reading of the charge.
We do wave reading of the charge. We are actually going to be entering a pivotal comments.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, any objections or reservations hearing, seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries the pleas accepted.
Mister, and I see your recommendations.
This violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is our first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Sir, sorry, I'm still working with the. It's not.
If you sit, if you sit here, you I will answer.
Mr. Cool, but any explanations?
Um, yes. Jen Korean at the time was in the middle of a. A G M change out from one G M to another. The information they thought they had submitted, they had not on our, in our defense, the twenty twenty two numbers. Or information was actually submitted early, they made sure they followed up. And so the twenty twenty one was just this weird. Avarition, they felt really bad. They, they're trying to make up for it. Now they, they put. They put things in place so that it doesn't happen again.
Okay. Were they in twenty twenty one was the prurision operating as well, though? Were they all operating?
Yes, it operated the prurision opened of March, I believe, of twenty twenty one and. Work ran continues.
And so. But ultimately, right, the twenty twenty one. Employee list was not provided at all.
Um. It was passed. My understanding was it was passed too, but.
He submitted it.
Yeah, and there was so, I guess. Yeah, when. Things were happening with regards to the G M's changing out and people moving around. Something got lost in the translation and.
Mister, is there any representation in the file of when the commission received the twenty twenty one?
I do not have any information on when we received the list.
Okay. Um, I'm Mr. Nicole, but they have put in place where we're not going to see this again, correct?
Yes. Most definitely. In fact. As I stated earlier, in twenty twenty two, they submitted it, made sure they submitted it. And they actually emailed again to the commission and said, you know, or do you have possession? And the commission replied back that. Yes, they did. So.
So where's your representations? It's not going to happen again. So my motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty nine.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second ending objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number thirty nine.
Thank you very much.
Calling a gen item number forty, L C V two, one, dash four, two, nine, Kings of War Restaurant. Definitely. Could you please state your name for the record?
It's Ken Jovanis from.
Could you spell that?
My name is K A, that's name K A. So restaurant name is.
Okay, Mister, can you please read the charge?
Honor about November first, twenty twenty one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise who has registered with the commission or who is subject to registration. On the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city in county upon.
Mister Kim, correct?
Yeah.
How would you like to plead? You can accept the charge. Deny the charge. Please no contest to the charge with explanation. How would you like to plead?
I'm going to explanation. My violation. It's the time.
Okay, so it's. So if you, if you plead accept. Or no contest with explanation, you can do that. You plead deny, then it's something different.
I want to know, no contest to well. I just agree to my violation.
Okay, so wait, wait. So we're going to take an. Um, second that you are taking a plea of no contest and then we'll let you know as soon as you're able to explain. Okay.
Okay, sure.
So motion to accept the plea. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing, seeing none, I also vote either motion carries the pleas accepted.
Mister, your recommendation, please.
Again, this violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is the first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Mister Kim, what is your explanations?
At the time. Twenty twenty one. Employed it, employee listed deadline is June thirty first. And they didn't. So our restaurant didn't change to liquor commission addresses and then. You guys here. Mail to my C K Jason is pay office mail to them. The day recognized to January thirty, the day recognized tomorrow is the last day deadline. Then I recognize at the time. I'm going to ask next day. July first, I want to email to because commission just one. July first, I wanna email to because commission, just one, just one day. Late. Importantly, since nineteen ninety seven, open business, uh, discounts violation on you, just one time, first time.
Okay, yeah. Uh Mister, now seeing, or do you have anything in your files on when the on this was recently?
Uh, I do not have the date that the uh commission received it.
Okay. And I don't know who we would ask, so they, how long have they had the license? If you know.
Usually employees, the once a year deadline, June thirty first, yeah. You know, ready, and we got the twenty seven digits, sorry, every time we did it at the time.
So my thing is, I just want to see it, no, you had represented, you have, have had it for about nineteen years, correct? How long have you had it? Twenty six years, I just wanna, if you know, if not, don't worry about it.
Well, under this, under this ownership, uh, we show records going back to nineteen ninety eight.
Nineteen ninety eight. And first time, okay. I'm gonna uh make a motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number four.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objection to reservations hearing, seeing that I also put I the motion carries a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item forty. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Agenda item number forty one, L C V two, one dash zero, four, two, zero, Hano, I do quote all.
I'm a general manager.
You spelled your first name.
What's your?
Spell your name, please.
Uh, F U M I A K I. Last seven months, M A P S U K.
Yeah, hold on, Mister, can you please read the chart?
Honor about November first, twenty twenty one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise. Who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point eight. Of the rules of the liquor commission of the sitting county.
Mister Matsuka, if you can. Accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest with explanation. Accept the charge, motion to um, accept the plea.
Second. Uh, there's been a motion and second, any objections or reservations hearing, seeing none, I also put I the motion carries.
So now, your recommendations.
Uh, this violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is our first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and I can report that the uh liquor commission received the uh annual employee list via email on November third, twenty twenty one, so two days later.
Mr. Matsuka, any explanation?
No explanation, just, just pull up the stuff of the bodies.
Does it show how long the license, license, you have the license in the file? It doesn't.
Uh, based on the information in the file, it looks like the effective date was November of twenty twenty, I'm not sure if there was anything before that.
Okay. So this must have got, that's work toward making sure we get it in on time, going forward. Um, my motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number forty one.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objection to reservations, hearing and seeing none, I also would I the motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item forty two, thank you, thanks, sir. Like agenda item number forty three, L C V two, two dash zero, one, two, one, Hawaiian Monarch Hotel.
Eight, forty two, was his was forty one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, calling agenda item number forty two, L C V two, one, dash, zero, one, zero, seven, Hawaii, Hawaiian Monarch.
I look, my name's Bernadette Halsey, H A L S E Y, representing.
So now, seeing, please read the charge.
Honor about August thirty first, twenty twenty, and or during the period from August thirty first, twenty twenty to September two, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration. On the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two, that's thirty eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city.
This house. Um, how would you like to plead, you can.
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing, seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries, please accept it.
Mister, now seeing your recommendations.
Again, this violation occurred on August thirtieth, twenty twenty one, licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing, this is the first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is how see your explanation.
Uh, during this time is, of course, during the pandemic, the two bars that were operating under our license were actually closed, it was difficult to get in touch with the. The managers to get the list, the proper list, it was submitted on the thirty first, or it wasn't received by the commission until September second. We understand the importance of submitting it on.
During the time, during the time period, that's listed here, were you guys operating and selling alcohol, or you guys were just closed? My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number forty two.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing, seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries. Letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number forty two. Calling agenda item number forty three, L C V two, two dash zero, one, two, one, Hawaiian Monarch Hotel.
Yes.
Bernadette Halsey, H A L S E Y.
Sir, now see here, please read the charge.
Honor about August sixteen, twenty twenty two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a duly registered manager in active charge of license premises during the time the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor. In violation of rule three dash eighty two, there's thirty eight point nine subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Is how see, how would you like to plead? To accept the plea.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations seen, hearing none, I also vote I the motion carries it, please accept.
Mister, now seeing your recommendation.
Again, this violation occurred on August sixteen, twenty twenty two, and licensee failed to have a manager in charge. Uh, so first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Miss, I'll see your explanation.
Again, this was under pandemic situations, both bars subsequently closed, there are no um operating. Bars on a facility, as of right now, and at the time of a violation, we weren't under, we didn't understand. Didn't know that we had to have somebody on duty, even if we weren't serving alcohol, so there's no guests provided alcohol on our premises. Both bars are still closed, so when we were served with the papers, uh, it was explained to us because of the. The license that we pulled, that we do need to have a manager on duty. Despite the fact that we aren't serving alcohol, so we did have two of our employees go and get our, our blue managers card, so we were issued that. Uh, hearing notice on the seventeenth and since on the twenty third, received two manager cards, so we have somebody covering during our hours of operation.
So, as question, so, um, is it answering, the date for the alleged violation was August sixteen, twenty twenty two, am I correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
You were still not open at that time.
The, the bars are still not open.
Still even.
But we have, they, we have a front desk, it's still operating as a hotel, but we don't serve alcohol of anything that gets. So we didn't think that we had to have a manager on duty, but we understand now that we do and do have that covered now, has been ready.
My motion is going to be. To approve the recommended line of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty three.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I. Uh, the motion carries a line of five hundred dollars to be issued for agenda item number forty. Calling agenda item number forty four, L C V one dash zero, four, three, eight, hearing bow.
All right, my name is Todd Sutton, T O D D, S U two, T O N, and I'm the vice president of A O P group.
You, good afternoon.
Mister, now seeing, if you read the charge.
Honor about November first, twenty twenty one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise. Who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two, dash thirty eight point eight. Of the rules of the liquor commission of the sitting on the.
Sir Sutton, how would you like to plead?
I'm gonna plead no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, seeing and hearing none, I also vote I the motion carries, please accept it.
Mister, now seeing your recommendations, please.
Again, this violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is our first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mister Sutton, your explanation?
I mean, there were some mitigating circumstances, this is the only concept in our portfolio that we don't actually own. So we were in a management agreement with Tao Group out of Las Vegas, there was a lot of, lot of variables to why we were like, yeah, okay.
Uh, was the list, uh, was the list ultimately turned in?
It was, we should admit it, yeah, it's like.
Okay, Mister, now seeing, is there any um date that they received it?
I do not have a date that the commission received the report.
Okay. Um, I guess, Mr. Sun, my other question would be is, has things been kind of ironed out currently, where you guys are able to be providing in a timely manner going forward?
I think we're in a much better position now than we were then, yes.
But, because, you know, we don't want to see back for another violation for November first, twenty twenty two, or any other dates.
Yeah.
Um, my motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number forty four.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number forty four.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty five, L C V two, two dash zero, one, zero, five, kind of a tavern.
Good afternoon, uh, sheriff members, permission to keep you to for the licensee. Wave reading the charge, we denied a charge and asked be set for contested.
Let me work through the paperwork.
Would, would you waive reading of particular rules and have your client receive them, do you know?
Yeah.
And this matter will be set for a contested hearing at the next available.
Yes. Yeah, with, with me on that. Thank you.
Thought you'd make us work, Mr. Q. Calling agenda item number forty six, L C V two, two dash zero, one, zero, two, La Cina.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
My name is Miles Furutani, the attorney for IQ Factory LLC, doing business as well.
Did you spell your last name?
It's uh, F U R U T A N I.
Mister Furutani, do you waive reading of the charge?
We're reading of the charge, you're on it, and we will enter a plea of no contest. My apologies, Mister Don Trong, T R U O N G. Uh, was here earlier, except that his restaurant, which has three employees, uh, opens at five thirty and uh it's past that time. His first customer is uh, the honorable retired governor Ben Kai Tan. Apologize on the.
That's fine, we understand the difficult power of.
Um. People contest has been entered, second.
There's been a motion and a second, the objections or reservations.
Sorry, I don't. It's easy, oh.
We, we have to make a motion.
Yes. Motion. Sorry. Second. Oh, no, I make a motion to accept the plea.
I'll second.
Sorry.
We got the wheels in order.
It was gonna be once, it was gonna happen somewhere along the line today.
Objections or reservations, seeing, hearing none, I also vote I the motion carries, please accept it.
Sir, so your recommendations.
This violation occurred on July twenty first, twenty twenty two, when licensee sold liquor while their license was expired. This is a first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Hey, Mister Furutani?
Yes.
Any explanation?
Yes.
We don't deny the charge, I mean, we actually did sell uh seven. Uh, glasses of wine that evening, and we were not aware, the restaurant was not aware that the liquor license had expired. It's never expired before, uh, it was always renewed, and the reason why it was not. It was not renewed is the accountant, who normally handles all of their paperwork. Unfortunately, at that time was COVID positive, actually pretty sick. Yes, also had a bubble pneumonia following that. Upon, upon learning of the violation, when they were issued the notice of violation, uh, La Cina was actually very proactive. Uh, they sent, and I, I do have copies of the, of the emails, if, if the commission is so inclined to see them. We sent copies of emails to the customers. Uh, we called the customers or sent them texts to let them know that the license has expired. And that we will not be able to serve any alcohol during the period that. The reservation was made, uh, and if the commission so chooses, I can leave copies of the emails that were sent. The following day, on the twenty second, actually, very proactive in doing that, and the license was ultimately. Reinstated, uh, unfortunately, because the accountant was ill. Uh, the tax clearance certificate and the certificate of good standing, which is, I think, required to get your license. Uh, took a little while, so I believe the license renewal occurred later in the year, but no alcohol was served. And again, I can leave copies. With the commission of our emails, and I can read, if they're all the same. Uh, to the customers, and it basically says this, we just want, oh, we just wanted to inform you ahead of time. That we are still in the process of renewing our liquor license, and unfortunately, because of the long process. We are unable to obtain it by tonight, therefore, we will not be able to sell any alcoholic beverages this evening. That was sent to every customer that they had contact information on, those who did not, we did not have contact information on, was either by telephone or by, by text.
But the, the date in question that, uh, July twenty first, twenty twenty two, like your, the licensee did actually provide alcohol, correct?
We sold seven glasses at fifty six dollars, yes. And it's the first time in, I believe, ten years.
In.
Uh, and unfortunately, it was a, it was a chain of circumstances which occurred, because they were under the assumption that the liquor license was renewed. The accountant, unfortunately, had COVID, had tested positive for COVID, and was actually pretty sick. So, uh, while, upon learning of it, when we got the notice of violation, we stopped immediately, let everyone know, hey, we can't sell. So. It's an unfortunate.
Do you know, Mister, when your license, when your client, I know they, they were closed quite a bit for COVID, do you know when they reopened?
I do not know the exact date, but I believe it was in the fall of two thousand and twenty. Two, I believe.
I'm, I'll assume it was a twenty, it was twenty.
Twenty one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, only because, yeah, this happened in July of twenty twenty two, so I must've, was in uh fall of twenty twenty one. My recommendation is going to be to. Issue a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number forty six. Yeah, I'm making a motion to. Motion is to. Issue a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number forty six.
Second. Been a motion and second, any objections or reservations, hearing and seeing none, I also vote I the motion carries a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. A fine of two hundred and fifty dollars will be issued for agenda item number forty six. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, just, I don't know what the protocol is. I did make reference to the letters. Should I leave it with?
It's up to you. If you want to have it included as part of the file, you can just leave copies with me and I will.
If I did make reference to it, I gave a copy to Mr. Neffinger already. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My apologies. Thank you again.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number forty seven, LCV two one dash zero one nine, two D Board Riders Barn.
Evening, James Mancell, Board Riders Barn Grill, anything member.
Um, gentlemen, are we going to move forward with the case this evening?
Um. You know, I was um. Didn't plead no contest to this before because I didn't have a report. See what the investigator's report was. So we're here, I think it was um. Month ago or so, they they asked, they'd submitted a report. I got the report on the twenty fourth of January. Email and I looked at it and um. I couldn't, I can't, I don't have all the information. I do the PDFs showing proof and everything else, but at a timely manner, I couldn't get all the stuff to fight something like that. And to tell you the truth, looking at everything, the one aspect of the case with mingling, I I really don't want to contest that. So let's do a no contest with explanation.
And do you waive reading of the charge? Would you like us to read the charge before you mention that?
If they, I know that we had a mix up on the charge number. So I guess. We're talking about the one where we're doing mingling.
Yeah, why don't we just read the charges?
Yeah.
It's an excellent.
Honor about April thirtieth twenty twenty one in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensing failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensing, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter to wit. Emergency order twenty twenty one dash zero four COVID nineteen novel coronavirus Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework, second amended order implementing tier three dated March twenty four twenty twenty one. In violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Manzel. I would like to plead on that.
No contest and just an issue.
Into accept, okay, second.
There's been a motion and a seconds and the objections reservations hearing or seeing none. I also vote I the motion carries the pleas accepted. So now singer, could you please give us your recommendation for this charge?
So this violation occurred on April thirtieth twenty twenty one when licensee violated the COVID orders by one failing to collect contact, complete contact tracing information and two. Allowing intermingling and insufficient social distancing between groups. Uh, this is licensing second violation of. Uh, the but of the statute. However, the first violation was issued on January of twenty eighteen, uh, which was not related to COVID. Um, based uh, the fact that this is the first COVID violation, the recommended fine will be five hundred dollars. Uh, I will also note for the commission that licensee received a warning for this conduct on August twenty second, twenty twenty. Or I'm sorry, August twenty second, twenty twenty.
And just for clarification, the prior um. The prior charge was under section two eighty one dash thirty eight and of course, not the emergency order.
Correct. I do not have information on what the violation was, but given the day, we know that it's in COVID order related.
Okay, um. Okay, the the old, the two thousand eighteen one. That we had was was just to make it clear that one was dropped. It had to do with. Fire equipment that we had and I came in and proved that and that thing was dropped. Just just because we have a pretty clean record. You can know there's a lot in twenty something years. But as far as this allegation. Did I? Not gonna contest because of the mingling part, but we were given no warning on this. It says follow up warning and investigator's report. A follow up warning was done in August twenty twenty and they came in and said that we were not operating as a restaurant, but we then showed that we were operating as a restaurant. So they didn't give us a violation. They just warned us. And then they used that as a follow up to come on a different executive order in April of thirtieth of twenty twenty one. And said that we weren't separated where I had. Three tenths, the space is thirty five hundred square feet. That was the kitchen. Twenty five hundred square feet. I had three ten tops, two five tops pushed together. Had the names of every person, one name for each reservation that I had on my phone. I have Q Rs on every single one of them, small restaurant that that is local type of style. You know, we know everyone in there. We had all their names listed on the stack of. Of contract tracing we have per the course of the year. I have the PDF and a QR. I have the text message with the people's names. Every person in the photos I could recognize it. No. They show a photo of a guy standing up, putting on a mask. This is the thing I can't justify because he did get up with the mask in his hand in the photo. And then he walks, puts his mask on, he's got his mask on, he walks over and says bye to someone, then walks out the door. So that mingling right there. Is a clear violation of everything I've heard about with mingling. Which everyone in this room, I'm sure violated at some point in time during this order. Because we we even had the mayor on TV saying that, you know, how do you stop from saying bye to someone? How do you stop them from getting up? So that mingling order I called here. And I called um. The mayor's office and he said, don't worry, we'll be given a warning if that happens. It's not like we're gonna go around and say someone's buying, you're walking out. It's gonna happen. But we detected, so the investigators did tell me that was the issue that they could not, I can't get around that. They said, what about these two tables? I go, they're together. It's just two circular tables put together, making it look like it's back to back. So we were slow. We had thirty some people. We're just at a hundred and twenty people in there at normal time. So we were not trying to extend ourselves. And we did our best. I mean, one of the pitches that shows our hand wiping thing, so how empty the place was. And I kept on going back to them saying, guys, you should at least it's Friday night, eight o'clock. That means you're closing us Friday night and Saturday because people won't see us open until eight thirty or something. So it's. The only times we're busy were Friday, Saturday nights. We were all literally dying in those days. And I think we tried our best, you know, I think that mingling thing was wrong, you know, I think was an order that couldn't be. You couldn't help us do it and neither could they. I think that for me, the most important thing today I came down here for is I fight. A lot of Trumpers about regulation not being a bad word. It's because we don't spend enough time on compliance and we spend too much time on enforcement with fines. If we help people comply, they'll stop thinking regulation is a bad word. Regulation cannot be a bad word in this society. So my plea, it's getting old. So you know, this is philosophical stuff. But my plea is that let's not keep making it so people think that the commission is bad, they just come in and give you tickets. How about, hey, guys? Can't get up with your mask, you know? One warning, this is not about something that has nothing to do with the case. You know, and we 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 did this endeavor and another one after that. There is a lot of different rules going on. This is urgency order for this. Was a month before that. The other ones that were warning was given on it was already rescinded. According to these in his own documentation. So I mean. I don't think there's a point. My attorney said, there's no point, you know, I couldn't hire him for what my finance is. So you know, it's stupid for me to fight anything. And you know, it's not like you guys have a duty. You gave me ten thousand dollars. The city kind of gave you ten thousand dollars for the COVID thing, you know, so. I am appreciative of that. So if I have to get back. Some money of it, you know, so be it. So that's all I got.
There there is one, and you made brief mention of this, um, but one of the um. I wouldn't say chart is only one chart, but one of the aspects of the chart was failing to collect information, tracing information. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did you have any um comment or explanation to that portion?
I did. I had, we had not only, and it says in the order that I could do it any way I wanted. The way I did it, I have open table. I also have people make the reservation for those tables. I'm not gonna deal with fifteen little tables. I made ten tops. You wanna come in and reserve a table with all your friends? They all know each other. They're in same houses or, you know, same groups of people that hang out and drink everywhere. Go into their own rooms together and their own, when the bar wasn't open, they were in the little kitchens this this big. Okay, so basically those people were part of that group. So I just said, you're a ten, you're a ten, you're a ten, you're a ten. You're not part of that group. We had three names written down, a piece of paper, people that weren't part of the group. The other people were parts of groups of ten. Okay, so I I had a QR code with every single person that's ever come into our place for the last two, three years and I could show a video. The QR code of every single person that came into this because all they did was go up and did the QR because they signed us the day after day. It's the same guests. We're not like, we didn't have tourists then. You know, if there was a tourist that was visiting, one of our regulars who brought them in with their party of ten. Because the rule was one person in a group of ten had to give their name so we could tell everyone. But if someone went to board writers and had COVID and we had to get ahold of everybody. I mean, that would why, we could get ahold of every single person that was ever in the bar, not to mention that night, and we probably would because we knew it. And my biggest concern was. My employees more than anyone else because it was hard to even just maintain a staff. They get a little simple. We had to keep them home and stuff like that. So we were doing everything we could. Maybe not. My intent was mostly to just save my employees. I didn't want to go up to all these different tables all over the place, all standing up, just this group, you're coming in for this hour. You want to stay longer, let us know. Continue the reservation so that we had it structured. I also have another restaurant, Kai Lu, right down the street. I have cameras on all this. The the investigator said, how do you know what this is being done right? I go, I have cameras for everything. I can show you what's live in all my restaurants right now. I've had that since two thousand eight. I saw the liquor commission come into the restaurant, take pictures, using pictures. So I ran down the road and greeted them and it's when they weren't gonna give me a warning and said they'd already give me a warning. I said, well, you know, no one's gonna love you guys, you know, for doing this kind of stuff because everyone had already gone around and got one person. And when I drove out, thing that got me the worst is when I drove out. Following them to see where they went next and heading home. I drive by and there's a wedding in the corner of a hundred and fifty people standing next to each other. And their car, four investigators drove right by that wedding of a hundred and fifty people. And I'm like, God, we're doing what we're doing. And there's a wedding of a hundred and fifty people standing around drinking champagne and music on and mingling, literally mingling. You know what I mean? So like, the hypocrisy was too much for me, you know, it's like, it's like, so I'll stop. Sorry.
As there is any detail in your report regarding contract tracing or the failure to have contracted.
Um, based on investigator crusade's report, um. When they were asked, uh, they were provided with an incomplete written last, um. Uh, at that time, uh, Mr. Mancell. Stated that he had a list of names present that night on his cell phone. Uh, Mr. Mancell showed his iPhone to investigator crusade and presented what appeared to be a list of text messages and then put his phone away. Um. The manager who first presented the witness, the contact tracing list made no statement or indication that Mr. Mancell had this list of names. Mr. Mancell was then showed the contact tracing log uh, that was presented for the night. Um, and during this conversation, Mr. Mancell did not attempt to present his phone or show his list to refute the observations. Um, and later on in the evening, Mr. Mancell admitted and acknowledged uh, on his own volition that they had messed up.
I did do, I did show them the phone. They didn't care about because we were talking about the mingling in the morning. And I continued to say, you can't give us a warning. We already gave you a warning. Said, when? I never knew of a warning. Didn't want to see my phone, had all the people in it. I still have it. I have the PDF with all the contract tracing I could prove. We want to, you know, but. And it's done. It's true.
So I I I think my one comment I want to make is that, you know, I think during this COVID time, I don't think that. The commission really wanted to be the guys that were in charge of checking all these violations and being charged up, but that's what we were put in charge of. And so I think, you know, we're hopefully at a point now in our life, we're never going to get that again. Right? And we can get through these things and hope we're not gonna have issues um, with that kind of thing is going forward. My motion is going to be. Issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number forty seven.
Second.
Then a motion and a seconds and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none. I also vote I the. Motion carries the letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number forty seven.
Thank you, guys.
Bring into other business agenda item number forty eight liquor administrator, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I just, uh, I earlier circulated the usual weekly report. I don't have anything to add. With respect to this, the description of the agenda, ninety day event schedule and work plan coordination. This is just to uh, remind the commission that. Um, if they wish an item placed on the agenda for the following week, this is a good time to let me know because we. Host the agenda on Fridays. And so if there's something in terms of a a discussion or a planned, a need for an executive session. Uh, if you could let me know on today or midday tomorrow at the latest, so we can include it. Next week, you'll see two items for uh, that are informational and for discussion purposes. So uh, feel just keep that in mind every single week as we get to this, uh, make that, uh, to remind me or or put it on my list.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I would like, uh, in future hearings to start a process where we can have an open forum discussion between the commission members and the public. For stated, um, usually probably one stated issue that we will agendaize uh, under this other business. And uh, just be an opportunity for us as a commission to discuss this issue openly and for the public to comment on that. So um, we will um, agenda those items in accordance with what you just mentioned.
Got it. I guess I have a question. Do we need to, so? Or was it not last week prior? We had some stuff discussion over administrative or administrator. Things is there anything that's going to be vested? The next meeting or few meetings that we're gonna have some discussion about that.
I believe it will be too very soon. Probably next week.
Okay, pause. That's my question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, meeting in charge. Thank you.
Dylan, I can fill you in on what you just.
Yeah.